Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Thank you.
I just lost you. Yeah, who just said hello on the computer?
That's Dave.
I see you're, see you're there. Yes, Dave, I can hear you.
Okay, can you see me?
Your camera is not on.
I can tell you that we are live on YouTube at the Oakmont Borough channel.
Can you see me or hear me? I don't see me.
Who said that?
Sophia.
Okay, not, not yet.
Oh, there I am. Oh, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm here, but my video is not working, so I'm gonna open this up on a new computer.
That's fine. David Emin in there? Okay.
I can't hear.
Who cannot hear who's saying that?
Lindsay.
Kate is muted, Randy is muted, the mayor is muted. There's Leah.
There's Dave.
Dave, are you strictly going audio or you going video as well?
I'm going video. I see everybody.
There you are, okay. Dave Eminem, are you also gonna go video too or no? Ah, you're muted. Hang on. You have to control yourself. There you are.
I thought I was on video. Do you not see?
Not yet. We'll see. Give it a moment.
I can see him.
You can? I just have a black square so far.
Dave Brinkley.
Frankly, yes, Dave, from Manning and Napier, I'm looking for him to pop up.
Oh, no, I don't see him.
All right, let me just check something here.
I see Dave.
Eminem, were you talking about Dave Eminem? From Manning and?
Oh, Dave Eminem.
I thought, I thought he meant the other one too.
So you know, we are live on our YouTube channel on the internet. What you see in front of you is what's streaming on that channel and that's, we certainly currently have eight participants, it looks like, on the YouTube channel watching us. For the people watching at home on YouTube, there is a 25 to 30 second delay from what we're talking about at the Zoom meeting for what you hear. We are not delayed, obviously, in the Zoom meeting. We're real time. Moving for others, Amber Yawn, okay.
Hey Scott, I can try to shut down and come back in to see if my, I can get the video to work again. It was working when it first came on.
That's fine. We'll wait for you. We can serve that. Mr. Mayor, did we give chief the night off to have to come to the meeting? You can just nod if you want to. Okay.
Scott, I can try to shut down and come back in to see if my. It was working when it first came on.
That's fine. We'll wait for you. We can serve that. Your mayor? Okay, I thought I had my YouTube channels muted. Give me a moment, please. That is muted. I'll wait to log in, Dave, when he comes back and we can start. Patty.
I'd like to cause order the April 20th, 2020 regular meeting of Oakmont Borough Council. Roll call, please.
Go Bianca.
All right, Mr. Brinkley?
Here.
We know. Ms. Del Rosso?
Here.
Ms. Ficaros?
Here.
Ms. Osterhut? Lindsay?
She's muted. Sorry.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Ms. Powers?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
And President Friday?
Here.
There are no registered speakers at this time.
That's correct. I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Comment from the public and.
I have one.
To the record, the correspondent submitted to him today.
I do have one to read to council. I'm trying to mute everyone's microphones. If I can do that, I'm not finding that control, unfortunately. Now, there we go. For the record, our email received today from a Mr. Len Kobaki, 126 Sixth Street, Oakmont. Dear Oakmont Borough Council, it has been roughly one year since concerns about the condition slash upkeep of multiple properties along the Plum and Sixth Street corridor were brought to the borough's attention. Since that time, only one or three properties have reacted in a manner that directly slows the trend of the gradual decline of the local neighborhood's overall livability. Additionally, a new issue, daily semi-truck traffic on Valley Street has been occurring over the course of the last year. Despite A, a clear violation of local Oakmont Borough ordinance found under Article 7, Operation of Trucks and Other Heavy Equipment, Section 80-25, maximum heights permissible on streets. B, the considerable direct impact to my family's personal health regarding diesel fumes and noise pouring into my windows. And C, resultant traffic issues, street hazards expressed to borough over the course of the last four months, semi-trucks continue to use Valley Street as a travel route. Question, number one. Will the borough require the business currently operating out of 621 Plum Street to obtain the necessary zoning and occupancy permits to continue its business dealings? Question two, if yes, when will the borough hold a public zoning hearing meeting for the business operated at 621 Plum Street, which is due to the residents of Oakmont Borough? Question three, is the borough going to enforce ordinance Article 7, Operation of Trucks and Other Heavy Equipment, 8025, maximum heights permissible on streets, and eliminate semi-truck traffic on Valley Street? Sincerely, Leonard Kobaki. That was the only correspondence we received to be brought in front of the public tonight.
Thank you. We've had a chance to review the meeting.
Patty, if you don't mind, I, I just want to give a quick response to that comment, just on one thing. That's okay? While we're still fresh on it. So, the borough code he's referencing was enacted in 1978, and it's 80-25, and I'm gonna summarize it. Basically, what it says is any vehicle that's over 10,000 pounds of registered weight has to have a permit to drive on any borough street. So, the way that's written is, any one-ton pickup truck, dump truck, anything that's registered as Class 3 vehicle, I'm sorry, Class 4 would have to have a permit. So, the way this is written from 1978 is saying that for somebody to drive a vehicle that's registered as a passenger vehicle, they have to have a permit from the borough. So, this is honestly pretty antiquated. You know, passenger vehicles should never have to have a permit to operate. I think we probably should consider revisiting that. And as far as his enforcement goes, there's multiple sections in the vehicle code, in the borough code that cover the same thing, and you don't do it from both of them. If you look at the same section, 80-48, there's limitations on parking a commercial vehicle or any vehicle over 10,000 pounds, between 10:00 and 6:00, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And with that truck referring to a valid, it's been issued borough tags. So, it's being enforced. The guy can still park there. There's, we don't tow semi-trucks. So, we give him borough tags, he parks there, we give him borough tags, he parks there, kinda like a game of cat and mouse. So, it is enforced. But I would like us to revisit some point that section that he did reference of 25. I think it's pretty antiquated and potentially probably illegal, so they tried to fight it. And that would be my only comment.
Chris, did you say that you are ticketing the car that's being parked on the street?
Yeah, there's a guy, excuse me, lives on Valley Street, that has tractor trailer. It's his own vehicle. So, when he's on the road, he parks in front of his residence, he's gotten borough tags for it. I mean, outside of giving him those, you know, that's the limited enforcement we can do. So, we can't physically stop him, tow his tractor trailer off of Valley Street. We can give him borough tags and citations, and we're doing that.
Does he pay the tags?
I imagine, I didn't look that even to it. If he doesn't pay them, then it gets forwarded onto non-traffic citation, which would have a heavier fine. But there's like, you know, I wanna say 60 days before it turns into that.
Is that, does that conclude your comments?
Yep, that's all I have. Thank you.
We've had a chance to review the meeting minutes from the April 6th, 2020 work session. Does anybody have any comments? I had one. I'm gonna need help with people refreshing my memory on the rec board E, Plum Creek Trail System Phase 2 and Pump Track. In the meeting notes, it says, he explained that moving the pump track to the other side of Creekside and changing the placement of the parking would put it in the flood plain, within the flood plain. I thought I remembered that if we moved the pump track, it would be moving it from the flood plain. Because if it stayed in its current position on the design, it would be in the flood plain.
Sounds familiar. The. I'm sorry. That sounds right.
It sounds right.
Yeah, that meant that. Maybe that meant that the parking lot would end up in the flood plain instead of the pump track. I'm not sure if that's how that was meant to be read.
I just wanna make sure that we said that we supported the pump track being relocated so that it wasn't in the flood plain.
I believe that's true. It was easier to replace the parking lot. If, if you relocate the pump track, it would be in the flood plain. It would be within the 100-year flood plain elevation if it's relocated.
I thought if it stayed where it currently is in the design, it's within the flood plain, and that's why there was consideration given to moving it.
Where was it currently? I don't call the drawing.
By the creek.
Okay, then, yes, it's likely it's already in the flood plain then, with the current design.
Moving it would take it out of the flood plain?
When he was talking about moving it to the rear of the property where that gravel parking is now, no. That's still the. Where was he talking?
Are you remembering where the pump track was going to be relocated closer to the road?
Right, so right now, if you look at the, if you look at the park right now, it is meant to be at the end of the soccer field, right on the edge of the creek. That's where the design is currently, and they are talking about moving it so that instead it'll sit where the current parking lot sits. So, we would move the parking lot towards the creek and then put the pump truck in the current parking lot.
Is that what we concluded, that we were in support of that?
Well, I thought, I thought we were supposed to be discussing it and getting costs permitting adjustments, things like that. I actually sent a text message to Tony DeScola today and said to him, you know, did he discuss this with Scott? Because I thought we were gonna, I thought we were gonna have a motion tonight to go over that, if we were to move our plans or things like that. And I don't, I didn't see it on the agenda. So, I don't know, maybe Scott can give us a little bit more information on it.
Under Recreation Board, we were having continued discussion about it. The latest email from Kevin from Banksen says the following. DEP, when Kevin directly asked him about relocating the pump track outside the floodway and constructing a new stone parking lot in the location of the pump track, DEP replied that this would be a major amendment because you're proposing additional impacts within the floodway. You would need to supply, Kevin, we need to supply everything as if it were a new permit unless time has expired. We were discussing the efforts of having a conference call with DEP to see if what we said in the email, if they understood what we said in the email, but DEP is telling him if Kevin were to redesign the site and move the pump track away from the creek out along Dark Hollow Road near the Flea property line, that a new permit would need to be submitted for, new application would be submitted for it.
So, I think, I think Carrie's accurate, though. We didn't make any vote. We didn't, we didn't decide one way or another. We needed to gather more information, and we are waiting on the engineer to come up with a cost estimate and to check on the permitting.
That is correct. That's sort of what I, my takeaway from the meeting was. I don't know which way to go, except that Kevin had to go find out more information from DEP, and he did, that to move the pump track would in essence have him be required to submit for a whole new application for a permit. Yes.
My other comment was in F, Plum Creek Trail System 3 and Site Remediation Phase 2. It says, Mr. LaScola asks for council's stance on the bridge. And am I correct that we gave no final comment on the bridge because of funding or, to me, funding? Because initially the grant had $30,000 and now it's coming in at 63? Is that the reason we gave no comment? Was there no conclusion on that?
Well, I don't know that we voted on it. My comment was that since it was in the original grant that was already approved, that the idea of the bridge would still be approved. Now, if it comes in over budget and there's not money for it, then they can't put it in. I mean, that would be my understanding of the situation. So, I don't, I don't know that we have to vote based on available funds. If there's a certain amount of money in the grant and they don't have it, and they don't have it in a match, then.
Okay, so when Tony was asking for our stance on the bridge, the fact that it was designed and approved, we are still in that position, and we have to wait for how things, would that be the answer to that?
That's, that's how I feel. I don't know if anyone else feels strongly one way or another.
I think, I think the fact that we approved it, and it was part of the motion that we made versus the pricing too. I think, you know, we could go out for bid and maybe those numbers would come in lower, but the bottom line is that we already voted on it. And that's what I, I conclude with, is that, you know, it's there. And then hopefully, you know, it sounds like to me we're gonna have some setbacks with DEP anyways, so we can figure that out.
Okay, good. Anybody else have any comments reviewing the meeting minutes from the work session? Okay, we'll go on to, I'll accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the March 16th, 2020 regular meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Mrs. Powers has made a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 16th, 2020. Is there a second? I'm not sure if I have a question. They seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, it cut out. Who seconded that motion?
Mr. Brinkley.
I did.
Did you get that? Yeah. Bianca, did you get that?
Yeah, Mr. Brinkley. Got it. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero. Discussion items by the borough manager.
There are no real action items to, for council to move on this evening, but since we had last published this agenda, wanted to give you updates. We are, we have supplied the Boulevard project with the resolution authorizing them to go for the grant for the LED conversion along the Boulevard. Under Kerr Museum, I'm currently working with the chairperson to have them list their losses they incurred in preparation for the antique show that was canceled due to the governor mandate to stay at home, which mostly would be upfront cost for publishing, printing, and advertising. We will see if we can find reimbursables for that. Oakmont Carnegie Library, Beth is currently working with the Allegheny Library System. They have a collective mechanism to go back into operation when the governor says it's safe to do so. And she's working on that with her staff, and Karen, currently for people listening on YouTube, do go watch the nightly or weekly readings of books by Karen and her cat. It is an attraction for Facebook friends. We're looking for things for kids to do. Under the Recreation Board, two announcements. First is the annual 5K race has been canceled for 2020. It will not be rescheduled. And under item B was the discussion we just had during the work session was staff needed some type of direction, whether it took a formal action tonight or more guidance, that I can go back to the Parks Record Board regarding pump track, bridge, and anything else that came up from that joint meeting we had. So, we can, I'd like to pause here for a minute and say, I've read the email from Kevin from DEP saying that if used to move the pump track out along Dark Hollow Road against the Flea property, that it would in fact be a new submission for permit. And I'm hearing that we have conceptually approved the idea of the bridge crossing Plum Creek, but ultimately the dollar factor would be the stopgap on not pursuing the bridge, if I'm correct on that. Anybody want to correct me if I'm going in the wrong direction?
I just missed all of that because everybody froze on my end. So, I don't know. I can't confirm or deny anything that you've said.
I will start over.
Sorry.
That's okay. There were two things from the meeting that we had with Parks Board that staff needed direction on. One was the relocation of the pump track, and Kevin from Banks and Engineers has confirmed that the movement of the pump track out to Dark Hollow Road and switching the parking around will require Kevin to submit for new permit. That probably will play with deadlines with grant applications or grant timeframes off contracts. The other item was the bridge. It is on part of the approved set of plans council approved years ago. It was part of the grant application and awarded. And now, by understanding, just based on the conversation a few moments ago, that it moves forward unless the price to put the bridge in exceeds what the grant would help us to do. Am I correct of that assessment? Okay.
Well, can, can I also say, I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, we're, I think we're doing the right thing as a council in moving that pump track, so we do not incur losses the next time it floods. God forbid it does in the next five years. Why would it take us another year to set this back? I mean, I would think that because we're doing this based on the fact of the flooding, don't we have contacts there that, you know, Scott, I know I had referred you to a certain person. Can't we pick up the phone and call them and maybe say, hey, listen, you know, we've done a ton of work. I mean, I feel like, Leah, how long has this grant been out there for? Maybe three years now? I mean, it's, I feel like we keep, every year we keep moving the money to the next year. I, I just think that this is getting ridiculous. So, I mean, can we, can we make some phone calls or see if that's possible?
In that email chain that Kevin and Tony, I were going back and forth, was, was to have a conference call with DEP. Based on this guide, we will definitely make that call happen and explain what the timeframe would be for adjustment of the permit to rearrange items on the site and on the site plan itself.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Well, and I would be curious about the rec board's feelings about moving forward, if it means starting over again. So, even, I know that they're already feeling like they're losing steam on this project that's been in the works for three years, and if they're told again, it's not gonna happen for another year at least. You know, it might be worth going back to them and saying, are you still, is there still something we want to do? I don't think, I don't think at this point we can build a pump track by the creek knowing what we know about the flooding that might happen. So, I think we either move it or we reconsider this grant proposal altogether.
I guess the rec board would have to be the ones.
I'm sorry, they were stepping on each other. Patty first.
I agree with Leah that, that if it comes down to making a choice between those two positions, that it should be the rec board that makes that decision.
Well, let's, can we just, can we possibly see what, what Scott's doing with them, with them? Can we give, maybe see in the next week or so if we can expedite that process and explain to them why, maybe if it even has to go back in letter form to them and explain to them? I mean, it might, it might be better if it's coming from us versus Kevin because we're the borough. I mean, it might, it might be better if it's coming from us versus Kevin because we're the borough. I mean, it's, we're the taxpayers, you know, I'm saying it's, it's not the, it's not the firm.
That seems reasonable. I think if you have a plan to have a conversation, then let's, let you have, I mean, you should have the conversation.
Okay.
Is it, with moving the track, is it the same percentage of likelihood that it would get flooded at either location? Because if we're moving it and it's the same risk, then that might factor into whether or not to move it as well.
I believe moving it was taking it out of the floodplain.
Well, I thought that too, but when we talked about the minutes, then my impression from Amber was that either place it's in floodplain.
Amber, can you answer that?
Yeah. Am I, am I muted or not?
You're off, you're open.
Okay.
Open mic.
All right. So if you move the, the pump track out of the floodplain, you'd still have to do a permit amendment because your design is now different. So their DP is going to require a permit amendment no matter what. If you deviate even the slightest from those plans, they're going to make you resubmit. So their, their letter was saying that if you move it in the floodplain, there's additional impacts. Then they want a whole, basically a whole new submission. But I, I'm not clear as, in my mind, I thought it was going to be relocated to where the existing gravel parking lot is currently at Creekside Park. Okay, that is not within the 100-year floodplain elevation.
Okay, that's what I was confused. Thank you. Okay.
Scott?
Yes.
I also felt that when we finished that conversation, that it wasn't clear that we had any real understanding of the difficulties of putting a parking lot next to the creek also. And so I, I felt there were a lot, there were a number of issues to be resolved. And so one of my questions is if, if it would be determined to delay and delay this and have to resubmit for the pump track, would the full grant money then be available for the other things that we wanted to do? The creek bank rehabilitation and the gravel bar and everything? Would we be able to still keep that money? Does any, I don't know if anybody knows.
That would be part of my conversation, but of the whole scope of this grant, pump track was just one facet of it. There is trail construction in that part. There is site remediation. There's other, other scope within this grant, so. Yes. I'm sorry, say it again.
So I'm sorry, I kind of stepped on you. So we would be able to go ahead with the rest of the project. And maybe if we can't do the pump trap, add that money to the work that's being done.
I would double check.
The rest of it.
I stepped on you again. I will double check with Kevin, but I believe that is perfectly acceptable to do, yes.
Well, and just to clarify to the stream bank rebuild rehabilitation, the gravel bar removal, that's separate from the trail work and the pump track. So I don't think that has any relationship to the other two grants.
The pump track included, give me a moment, my papers are upside down. The pump track was the phase two trail system. I don't exactly remember on the map what part was phase two, but a majority of the work was trail system phase two, which was 3,400 feet of fencing, earthwork, seating restoration. There is trail work involved in that grant with the pump track. The pump track itself was about $70,000 of the whole, of the grant. The remaining 186,000 was everything related to trail development further upstream.
That's this one, the CFA 2, this one right here.
CFA 2, yeah. Our, our office term is called CFA 2, correct?
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, 40, you know, it doesn't give the length of the trail, but it involved an extensive amount of trail work beyond Creekside Park property.
And that seemed to be the rec board's first priority was the impression I got that they were most concerned about getting the trails in, so. Know if anybody else said that same opinion.
It's a lot of work. It's not a small trail system in phase two. It's a lot of earthwork to do it.
I would assume, and maybe Amber can speak to this too. Like, so, so I think Nancy, I'm not sure, maybe this is what you're saying. Is that if they can't do the pump track, would they still want to do the rest, the remainder of those, that trail work that goes with that grant? And my assumption would be that they would still want to do that, that trail. Not only would it be great for Oakmont, but they're hoping that it'll connect into a much larger trail system ultimately that will connect many towns. And so I would, I would, I mean, certainly I can ask and we can get official information about this. But I would assume that if they can still use the remainder of the grant money for that, for that project, they would want to. Now, Amber, would that, if, if you dropped a portion of the plan, so say you just decided not to do a pump track, would that just be asking for an amendment from the DEP?
Would you even have to do, would you even have to do that for that? Because we've already had approval on that.
So I think that you would have to do a permit amendment for an NPDS permit especially, because you would be altering your limits of disturbance. But the amendment would not nearly be as significant as it would be if you were adding structures in the floodplain or adding structures anywhere actually. As long as you weren't adding anything, sorry. You know, it would be a lesser of an amendment. He wouldn't have to start from scratch. I mean.
Okay, I have, I have direction. I will go, at least we'll initiate the conversation with Tony, Kevin, the DEP. And Leah, my understanding, you'll, are you going to talk to the rest of the board about the trail or I'm just going to Tony with that as well?
If you're going to be talking to him, I mean, certainly I would say, go ahead and have that conversation with him also. I mean, I, I can talk to him. I mean, unfortunately, they're not, they haven't held a meeting. You know, since all of this has started. So I haven't been in the room with all of them.
Administratively, I'm thinking of leaning towards other entities using his own Zoom format so they can start re-meeting, meeting again if we need be. Okay. Okay, I am free to move on then if it's okay. I have direction. I appreciate that. Brian Crooks, just a real, real quick update from Brian. They're down to a handful of tree removals still occurring based on our contract that we gave to Beaverjack in the December. They are also coordinating the stump removals as part of the contract and they hopefully be done in the next couple of weeks. Currently, Duquesne Light has started their tree removal operations and it's had a few bumps. One mostly is we, there was a misunderstanding about the wood that is left behind after Duquesne Light, excuse me, Penline, who's working for Duquesne Light, does their tree clearing. Technically, they are borough trees because they're in the right away, so it's borough wood. Shade Tree Commission is working with the tree companies that we hire to remove the wood. Also, any resident listening here, I'm not going to lose sleep. If you want to go take some wood for backyard campgrounds or take it to your campground, it's perfectly fine. It helps us eliminating the wood accumulation along the curbs. That is perfectly fine with me. I would do it if I could. So that's, we are, Brian's biggest hiccup is getting removed, removing the felled lumber that is along the roadway where it's piled. And he's working on hard to get that removed. Under administration, we did receive a confirmation email from the county. The primary election has been moved to June 2nd, 2020. The county obviously will coordinate with us with ballot machines, voting machines. However, there is a strong push, as you know in the papers, to go for a paper ballot based on residents asking for it. So we're watching that. If something changes from the county, we'll let you know. But currently, our borough building is still going to be utilized for the primary votes in June.
Can we go back for a minute to the shade tree? I mean, and I can save this till later, but I just want to address the email that I received from Brian about an incident that occurred at a residence house. And I don't know if now is the appropriate time to talk about this or if that would be like during executive session, but like a situation where ultimately the police were called and I don't know, before I go any further, Kate, is it okay for me to address this now?
Um, I don't know that it needs to be addressed now. I know that I was also involved in that, I got involved in the conversation. And I know which one you're talking about and I'd be happy to give an update on kind of the legal advice given in executive session, if you're comfortable.
Okay, okay. I would like to say just for the record that we are incredibly fortunate to have Brian and Brian takes a lot, a lot of heat for the borough trees. And I think it's important that everyone that sits on council, you know, shares information about borough trees and how we manage borough trees and, you know, I don't know, I don't know what to say except defends our volunteers who work on our commissions. Because I would say that Brian, some of these conversations are abusive. And I don't want to lose somebody like Brian. And so I think it's important that we all make sure that we share with our neighbors and have conversations about, you know, how we manage our shade trees and how Brian is managing our shade trees. And I understand that people are very upset about seeing trees get cut down. But we've, it's been explained very clearly to all of us why they are being cut down and that it's because of Duquesne Light and not a decision that we're making to cut down trees. So I just wanted to make sure that that was said out loud. Brian does a lot of really great work and he really pours a lot into all of this. And I think it's important that we defend him.
I, I just want to also add, Leah, I completely agree with you. I see him out and about all the time as well. I spoke with him just the other day. And up on Eighth Street, just actually today, someone had called me about trees and, and they were complaining. And I made sure that they understood that, you know, 30 years ago, we weren't here when things were planted. And Brian, I think, is doing a good job of maintaining them. He has a forestry background from Penn State and, you know, I've spoke with him about this. We're very lucky to have him. So I, I really agree with you 100%. And I think that as a, as a council, we should, we should be on, on board with him.
That's all I had.
Okay, I appreciate that. I gave him the same support over the telephone when the incident started, so. And same thing, it's like you don't have to take that. You do what you need to do to be safe. Okay, Plum Creek watershed update. Nothing much has happened on our end since the trees were removed. I know that we're still waiting for the Corps to get their specific funding to do the review. We did sign off on the scope of work last month. They'll be waiting for their funding approval from the Washington DC and they can do the scope. The only thing I forget, Amber, is the number of hours part of the scope. I thought it was 24 hours. You can nod if that's correct.
Yes, the number of hours is part of the scope of work.
Okay.
I don't remember exactly how many, but it's a part of the scope.
So we're, we're sort of waiting for the Corps to review. And it's, they probably started looking at it. They just can't officially say anything until they've gotten their funding approval. So we're waiting on that with Plum Creek, which once the approval is done, then Amber, you can start doing your final designs for everything in the corridor around the commons, correct? You're muted. Am I correct in that?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, you are correct in that.
Okay. Kate?
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly give kind of an update on the, on a, some updates in the legal landscape. Senate Bill 841 was signed by the governor today and that is a bill that does a couple of things that impact the borough directly. One is that it gives very clear guidance on holding virtual meetings and how the public should be able to participate in those. I would just like to say that our current setup is absolutely meeting those requirements and those guidelines. It confirms that boroughs do not, or any entity would not need to have a quorum physically present, even though the borough code calls for that. And also allows for public participation to happen either live during a meeting like this or through written comment. So I know that Scott, as he's been communicating with residents and we've received comments that way. Another thing that it addresses that will probably come up later on the agenda, it allows for the extension of deadlines for real estate taxes. Those are set by statute based on the date that the tax notice is provided. So it allows the borough to push back if appropriate deadlines for both allowing a discount period and for allowing taxes to be paid at face value. The other thing it does that will directly impact the borough is it gives some extended time for timelines under the MPC. If the borough were to receive any development submittals at this time or anybody moving forward with those. As you may have seen, the governor indicated that on May 8th, he'll start to reopen Pennsylvania. And one of those things that may be reopened would be construction. And that would be commercial, residential and non-residential, private and public alike, as long as certain guidelines are met. We're still waiting for those guidelines to come out, but we'll keep an eye on those because I know that that's going to impact the borough in both some borough projects hopefully getting to move forward and also construction going on in the borough. And we just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with what's happening and that our code officials also feel comfortable with any action being taken. Those were the updates I wanted to give and I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
I, I'd like to bring something up, but I mean, it should be during executive session. It's just about regarding pay and things and, and just making sure that we're on track with in terms of the revenue streams coming in and making sure that we can pay when, once we get back on, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So I think that if you want to talk budget, that's public generally. If you want to talk about if there's a specific employee who you're worried about whether or not we'd be able to pay that employee, I'd say save that for executive session. Anything where we start talking about either specific, you know, roles or something where someone can identify an individual.
I'm just making sure that based on the fact that we will have some budgetary issues and in terms of collecting taxes and things like that, that we will be able to pay employees. And we, we won't set ourselves up for any kind of failure. That's, that's my question.
Okay.
So from a budgeting perspective.
Luckily, I get to not answer that one. Scott?
I guess that's a great introduction to Randy and the treasurer's report.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andy, Randy.
I assume everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I, the treasurer's report should have been in your packet that you received, so I'm not going to read it word for word. I'm going to highlight things in each of the key paragraphs and we'll kind of touch on the point that Carrie brought up. So, so this is as of the end of March, March 31, 2020. So it's the first quarter. At the beginning of this report are two tables. Let me explain the two tables. The first table is the actual bank balances that we had at the end of March compared to where we started the year. And these are actual bank statement balances that, that we have. The, the second table is, is you've seen this before. It's the equity roll, equity roll forward summary. This is the book balance for cash that, that Renee records. And the only difference between these two tables, the 99% of the difference is simply unclear checks. Because the borough's on a modified cash basis, we might issue a check that Renee records as an expense, but, but it hasn't cleared. But, but it hasn't cleared because it hasn't been cashed by the, the, the person that was, uh, that received the check. And therefore that's primarily the only difference. If you look at many of the funds that don't have a lot of activity, the balances are exactly the same. It's those like the general fund and some of the others that have a lot of activity where the balances have a slight difference. So, so, so Renee and I do a reconciliation every month on this top list. Renee gives me a reconciliation of every canceled check that's open so that we can ensure that we are, uh, we are totally in sync. So that's just what's in those two tables. So you can see by fund, our cash balance or in the equity, you can see the revenues and expenditures and, uh, and the net income for the year to date, and then the current balance in our, uh, in our equity. So let me get into the, uh, you know, the summary here. Overall, our cash position at the end of the first quarter is quite good. Nothing unexpected, significantly unexpected at the end of March. If you recall, the governor didn't put his stay at home requirement in place. I think it was like March 16th or so. So, uh, so really not a big impact at all on the first quarter. Everything, the year-to-date expenditures and revenues are in line with the budget that was amended by council in March for things that carried over from last year. That will make variance analysis a lot easier as we go forward in the year. So the losses from postponed and canceled events, things like the Kerr Museum impact and the library, they moved their Taste of Two Towns out and might combine it. Uh, you know, we don't know what will happen yet. As well as timing of the collection of the EIT, the earned income tax and the real estate tax. That'll impact our cash position this year for sure. We won't know what that's going to be until we move farther through the year. Uh, and then we'll talk a little bit more about that later. There is some relief available, maybe available, become available from the state to local governments in future, future federal or state stimulus packages. So Scott's, I know he's following that very closely. And, uh, and that's important that we take advantage of that. Some of the small business things that came out and those kinds of things that the borough was not eligible for, but, uh, and some of the nonprofit things, the borough was not eligible for those. But, uh, but it's something we should follow very closely. I will say over the last few weeks since this was put in place, the shutdown, uh, we've been scrutinizing expenditures. Both the president counsel, the borough manager and I sign checks every week. And so we're, we're holding some checks, you know, that aren't emergencies or things that we can, as we try to manage our cash flow, things that were delivered and completed, we're trying to pay in a timely manner. But, but there are some big things that, that come in periodically. We want to just manage our cash very carefully till we get a better handle on how the timing of the cash flow will be for the year. You know, once construction starts, and this is, goes along the lines of the discussion on the grant, the, the grants that we have, we have many grants out there right now, but once construction projects are allowed to continue, it's really important that the timing of those reimbursements from the state or whoever are done in a timely manner. So we'll talk about it a little later as we get into some of the specifics. So let me go through each fund quickly. The, the general fund, everything is pretty much as planned. We did get $101,000 from the leaf truck grant. If you recall, that was something we paid for in 2019, but the grant, uh, the, the payment did not get in until 2020. So that was, that was part of the amended budget that council approved last month. It's possible the second quarter could be behind in revenue. You know, uh, we could have a lot of employees in Oakmont who are furloughed or laid off, and therefore the earned income tax could be less because they didn't earn anything. We won't know the impact of that until we start seeing the payments coming in. So we'll be following that very closely. Some of the schools, with the schools being closed, uh, we could see lower reimbursement for some of the park activities. While they have it budgeted, it's just a matter of will they continue to pay? We'll continue to build them, but will they continue to pay when they didn't use the parks during that, uh, that time period? And there's going to be some other smaller budgeted revenue that's going to come in a little bit lower. Obviously people have seen the activity with the trade commission or the shade tree commission. Their, their budget is for that particular line item is over, but overall I'm told that the, the shade tree budget will be within budget for the year. There's been a lot of activity early in the year and that'll be done, uh, that'll be done fairly soon. But the rest of the expenditures in the general fund are pretty much on track with no significant variance or a quarter through the year. And that's where a lot of the expenditures have been on a year-to-date basis. The transfers, we have done some transfers. One of them was from the, uh, two, from the general fund to Capital Roads. That was for a carryover project. Uh, the other is to the library for their working capital. And so that's a normal, normal thing that occurs. All the transfers will occur, you know, fully once the real estate taxes are received later in the year. And we'll talk about that. I think it's an agenda item that you will have to decide later on what we want to do with, with what the solicitor said about the allowance to move some of those dates. Not really much to say on the Boulevard project. It's pretty much in line with expenditures. They have some fundraising activities. They do mostly by mail now, so that should still continue as we go forward. The Kerr Museum, I think Scott mentioned he's working with the chairperson there. The, uh, they will, obviously the revenue will be lower because of the last minute cancellation by the country club of their antique show. That's their big fundraising in March. It's yet undetermined what the overall impact would be. You know, we may get relief as Scott's going to do for some of those costs. A lot of the things for some of their events will be considered donations. But I think there's some teardown and setup costs that they may on the hook for, even though the country club was the one that canceled the event. So we'll, we'll know more and be able to report more later on in the year, the next quarter, or hopefully within a few weeks, we'll, we'll have all the costs in. They are giving credits to rebates or, or credits back to some of the sponsors for the program and some of the patrons were asked if they wanted to get a refund or have that be considered a donation. So we'll have a complete report later on. There is a mature, there's a CD they have in their fund for 275,000. It matures in May. So we'd like to recommend that it be rolled over and increase, we increase it to get a breakpoint. The rate's not great right now, obviously with the economy way it is with the, with the virus and the market. But we could raise the, uh, put a few more bucks in there and then get a larger value, hopefully get a breakpoint on a little higher interest. So we'll work with the Kerr Museum Board on, on making that happen. The library, the revenue's on track for the first quarter. We did transfer on the 75,000 year-to-date. Their fundraiser was, is going to be moved out, so that could impact their revenue for the year. And depending upon how, you know, how we open the country, the state, the borough is going to be an impact on participation by the public and, and all of that. So there's a lot yet to be determined. Expenditures were generally on track and because we, you know, we are still paying the salary workers, but we are not paying the part-time workers because the library's been shut down since mid-March. So we'll have some favorable labor cost as we, uh, as we go forward here in the library. So yet to be seen how the revenue will play out. The sewer fund is on track as planned. Uh, invoices are being issued by PAMs on time and on the normal schedule. They had some expenditures that were carried over from last year from the, the pump creek, pump Plum Creek pump station. The engineering for that and the equalization tank was one of the items for, uh, that they had in their budget. So that work is continuing, uh, and their revenue and, uh, and other things are, uh, are holding. The Capitol Parks, um, so a few of the events planned, I think he mentioned one, uh, is probably not going to happen. I think Scott mentioned that earlier. Uh, so there could be some other events, you know, the timing of some of the events and, and parks rentals, things like that could be impacted. A large portion of the revenue for the, for the Capitol Parks is quite frankly, the three, the three, uh, grants we have, Chateau Beach and the two for Creekside Park and, and the trails. And so one of the things we have to be careful of is, you know, note that the, the total revenue and expenditures for those grants are included in this year's budget. So that means that our match is included in this year's budget. So if we, if we do the work that we said, then our match is there. But on top of the match, it is really important that we get reimbursed by the grantee at the time that the works perform so that we don't run into a cash flow problem. So if we do work over and above our match and it goes into next year and we don't get the, we don't get the match or the grant the state, uh, next year, that's going to create some hurt for us on the cash flow. So Scott needs to be watching these grants very carefully and make sure that as work is performed and we've made our match, that we get reimbursed accordingly. Otherwise, we're going to have some cash shortfalls for the year here. Now with the delay in construction, it's likely a lot of these aren't going to happen and they're going to slip anyway, just by natural, by the natural course of the way things have unfolded. So, um, so hopefully it won't be a big problem. Liquid fuels, we received 196,000 from liquid fuels from Pennsylvania in the first quarter. Most of you probably know, but just as a reminder, liquid fuels is part of our gas tax. That's why our gas isn't going to go to $8.81 gallon like other parts of the country. But part of the Pennsylvania tax, it goes back to the, some of the boroughs and it's calculated based on the, um, the, the mileage that you have, uh, in your, in your community. And you get a, you get a amount of money to be able to use for, um, for paving and roadwork. This money gets paid directly to contractors. So this is, this is part of our overall paving program, but it gets paid directly to the contractor. So it really can't be used for anything else. So parts of the paving program probably could continue as, as originally planned, you know, weather permitting and, and that sort of thing. Capitol Roads, we made a transfer to, from the general fund early in the year for a carryover project. That was for some of the stream modeling that Senate did and some other engineering services. The remaining transfers, as with all the other funds would occur later in the year. By the way, the transfers, the total transfers remaining for the rest of the year to the other funds is around $800,000 right now. We've made 125 so far between the library and Capitol Roads, but we have another 800 to do for the rest of the year. So the timing of those real estate taxes is important to, uh, to getting those transfers completed. Capital Reserve, uh, the, uh, first quarter, uh, we finished the Dark Hollow Road Repair. That was a result of the flood in July of last year, uh, where the road, part of the road washed away. So that was completed. And, uh, and I think we had a CD there that would matured in April. And I think the, what we're going to do is roll that over. Because of the virus, the banks are being fairly lenient on a lot of things and we have the ability to, to, you know, if we need that capital or that cash for something, we could pull that out and without a penalty, uh, one time, uh, you know, as a result of the virus situation and if there's a need for cash. So in kind of in summary, while we're on solid footing, uh, for the first quarter, there's a lot of uncertainty on how, you know, we return to normal. We'll get an indicator in April of the tax revenue levels. And the EIT would be the first indicator, uh, as to what we'll have. So I think it's prudent that we, we continue to manage expenditures very carefully until we have a better understanding of how we're going to exit this period and what is normal and when is, when is that return to, to normal? So I think it's important that we just be very careful, try to maybe hold off some of the bigger projects until we have a little more certainty on the amount of money coming in. So that as Carrie said, we can continue to pay our employees, you know, that are, that are still working and, uh, and still providing service to the borough. That's it. Let me stop there. I know I went pretty quickly. Uh, I'll take any questions that anybody has.
I just, I just wanted to add that, you know, we just, we just did a grant with the Rurview Education Foundation. That was from the state money from DCED, things like that. And there is a lag time sometimes because there's sometimes like paperwork issues and things like that. So we just want, you're very right, Randy. We don't want to run low on cash flow. So if it's going to take six to eight weeks or, I mean, we just want to make sure our, our paperwork is clean and we're just following through with it. So we don't get stuck in that.
What we're going to do administratively here is, is create a checklist for each grant. The grant, grants, sometime they do require what the contract looked like before it was bid, what the contract looks like after bidding, a signed contract. And we're going to make sure that everything's in there and essentially just start submitting the paperwork that they need to have in the file. That way they come back and say, well, you never gave us a copy of the bid documents. We're going to checklist that with Phyllis and go through everything and make sure that each grant has that checklist cleared. So that all that's what we're waiting for is, is making payment requests or requisitions. And to piggyback on Randy, we did do the paperwork last week to renew the $300,000 CD for another year.
Right.
Again, knowing that there's no penalties. That's already been approved and handled.
I think Scott, one other thing for the grants, in addition to the, you know, this, that's an after the fact in terms of the bids. But I think we need to really look at laying all the grants out and seeing what a forecast of when we think work's going to be performed. I think Amber can contribute to that. And, you know, the timing of once we get these things going again and we get permission to do construction, we should lay out a project forecast of when we think that money's going to get spent so that we can really, that would really help us in terms of giving us a signal on cash flow.
Yep, agreed.
Randy, is there like a bottom line for our expenses that we have to pay that we can know so that in the second quarter, we can kind of tell, okay, we have those covered?
We can look at last year and, uh, and see, uh, you know, what the bottom line would be. I mean, I, quite frankly, the EIT is the big variable, uh, because that's the one where we don't know the number of people that were, that haven't been working, that haven't had EIT for the month. Uh, or, you know, for this period. The property tax, we pretty much know what the property tax is. We know the timing of when we receive it in the prior years. And we'll, I think we'll talk about this at another agenda item. But, uh, but we can look at what the minimum expense is on a monthly basis and see what we need for, for payroll. We do have some cushion in different places that we can, you know, emergency from a working capital standpoint. I, I'm loathe to try to, you know, tap that at this point. I think we, we're in pretty good shape right now with the major things. We just have to be very judicious as we go forward with spending.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. I would accept the motion to approve the warrant list for March 2020 in the amount of $441,837.74.
I'll make that motion, Patty.
Mr. Ryan made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
This is poster how seconded the motion. All the, any discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes seven to zero.
Now, I think it's yeah, sorry. So it's tricky not to interrupt each other here. As you can see on the agenda, we're going to continue our discussion about the defined benefit pension plans. Everyone received a brief memo about the proposal that Mr. Eminem David from Manning and the Pier had given to us in February and then had followed up with detailed information with some actuarial examination of the two plans. Dave's on the phone with us and so I was going to ask him just to briefly summarize the proposal we were making and, uh, and then see if there are any other questions. I did get a few questions and I passed them on to Dave so that he can address them also. And, um, and then we can do, uh, move forward with the resolution if, and see where people want to go with this. So Dave, do you want to go ahead? Are you?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I, I apologize. I couldn't get my video to work without freezing the whole system up. So I'm on audio only. But first some good news. Um, I, as of close of business on Friday, both pension plans have asset values that are higher than they were at the beginning of the year. So your first quarter, the first quarter performance in both accounts was, uh, was, we, we had very minimal losses. So we had, we had positioned the portfolios very, very well for this particular environment. And, uh, so that you have benefited from that very nicely and are in a strong position to move forward and to make decisions like you're planning on making today. But essentially the, what I've brought up to counsel is that your pension plan is extreme, is very conservatively managed and has been for quite some time. Right now we are, we are asked to put an equal emphasis on managing year-to-year volatility as we put on the achievement of long-term growth. And that's, that's fine. And that's, that's fine. But our analysis of the pension liabilities and the life cycle of the pension plans tells us that you, you have the flexibility, you have the room to be able to focus more on capital growth than you do on managing year-to-year volatility. And as I've reported in the past, I believe we have eight other pension plans in Allegheny County. Yours is the only one that is in this more conservative investment objective and, and not in our long-term growth investment objective, which is another step up, but which focuses primarily on capital growth and, and keeps, and has management of year-to-year volatility as a secondary, also important, but secondary objective of the plan. So essentially it's a question of whether you would be, are interested in considering allowing the markets to provide more return for the plan over the long term. And if that works appropriately, that should reduce the, the borough's future needed contributions to the plan. Let the, let the market provide more return and, and ease the burden on the, the borough over the long term would be the idea. The question has always been, if you were interested in doing that, and, and you don't have to be, you could keep it as a very conservative investment objective, but it would, it would mean that you would have higher contributions over time. Perhaps a little bit more stable contributions. They wouldn't fluctuate as much year-to-year with the market. But the idea would be to allow the markets to add more of the return instead of borough contributions. The question has always been, if you were interested in moving that direction, what's the right time to move to that direction? Because it would require, it would, as soon as you make that decision, we would immediately increase our equity allocation by a, you know, a decent amount, not a hugely significant, but a decent amount. And it, it becomes a question of timing. The last five, four or five years, we have been in a fairly strong bull market. We have been, you know, the, the economic cycle has been extended into the longest economic cycle that we had. And so, or since World War Two, until this past quarter is likely to end that. But so all indications were this wasn't a particularly good time to be increasing the, the capital or the, the risk allocation of the portfolio. But I wanted to bring it up to counsel late last year because I felt that it was something that I, I would like to get direction from should the opportunity present itself when the market were to pull back. And that has now happened. So before you, we've suggested a recommendation to consider two different options. One is to remain in the current investment objective that we call growth with reduced volatility. But your, your pension plan currently has us place a forty-five percent maximum cap on our equity allocation. You could remain in this current objective that places equal emphasis on capital growth and year-to-year, managing year-to-year volatility. But take that forty-five percent cap off and allow us to go to sixty percent should the opportunity present itself. The second option was to actually take this opportunity to move the investment objective up to that next investment objective called long-term growth. And the, you know, it certainly was a very good time to do it about a month ago in hindsight. Of course, at that time, you know, things were very scary. Now that the market has recovered somewhat and in a fairly strong recovery since, since late March, I believe that, you know, the market is still fifteen percent below where it was at, at its peak on February nineteenth. So there's still some opportunity. There, there still is a fairly decent time to make the move. If you were to make the move and, and select option number two, which is to move the objective to long-term growth, it would mean about a ten or eleven percent increase in your equity allocation. The equity allocation today is about, is about forty-four percent. We did bump up against the, the maximum that you have in place as we started to move in and buy stocks in the, in the, you know, a month ago as prices got really low. Currently, the long-term growth portfolio, it had reached about sixty percent equity allocation. But over the last couple of weeks, we began to again, start to take a little bit of risk off of the portfolio. And we've reduced the allocation to about fifty-five, fifty-six percent stock. So right there, I'll, I'll stop right there and see if I have, if, if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions they'd like to raise with David? Scott, can you indicate if anybody's raising their hand?
No, nobody is making a movement.
Okay. So when we had talked about this and in the memo I sent to you, we were thinking of the increasing the stock percentage, allowing the investment to be moved up to sixty percent. So that is not actually stepping into their higher plan. It is just increasing our allocation in the stock. Is, is that correct, David?
Well, actually, it, it would remove the upper, it would remove the upper bound on our equity allocation. It does not necessarily mean that if, if you were to vote on that and just move the upper bound from forty-five percent to sixty percent. Right now, we would not buy any additional stock. But if the price, if the stock market were to fall further from here, we would likely step in and begin buying again. A month ago, we did hit your forty-five percent limit and we stopped buying. Whereas in other accounts similar to yours, we would have bought a little bit more. We might have gotten to forty-six or forty-seven percent equity. But in the future, we may have, we, we may have the opportunity to increase to, you know, up into the fifty, the fifty percentage equity. We would then not go any higher than sixty percent, but it would be our discretion.
Okay. That gives us that, that flexibility going forward. Go ahead.
Nancy, would that be option one?
Yes.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not a member of council, but as treasurer, I'd, I'd like to understand, David, what, what, what do you see as the timing when we will get to the floor where we would in fact start the process of moving up to sixty percent? I mean, I, I think there's, there's so much uncertainty in the market right now. I, I just, I want to understand more about the timing. You know, we have a small plan, not a lot of employees in it. And as you said, we, we have a higher bounce in the start of the year. I think that's great for this time period. We missed our window the last couple of years, as you've explained many times. But, but going forward, what do, what do you see as a timing of getting up to the sixty percent?
Well, we would only, the, the way our process works is the, the only way we would likely start moving up from where we are today is if prices in the stock market went down. So if, if, and, and, you know, a month ago, the, the scenario was very, very scary. The uncertainties were extreme and prices had dropped almost thirty-five percent from their peak in February nineteenth. We began finding companies that we felt were being, had reached levels of valuation that more than compensated for the, the high degree of uncertainty in those companies' businesses. So we began adding to our, our weights in some of those companies and, and even buying new, new companies that we did not own before because they reached levels that we felt comfortable. Now the market has rebounded about twenty-five percent since then. A number of the companies that we have bought have bought, have, have appreciated greatly. So your plan and most of our clients have, have participated very nicely in the recovery. Right now though, we are more concerned that maybe the, the stock market has begun, has gotten a little bit too optimistic when our underlying base case is that this recession is going to be fairly deep and, and the recovery is going to be fairly prolonged. This is not going to be something, as you've already indicated yourselves in all of your discussions tonight, there's no clear path to getting back to a hundred percent full economic GDP growth until a lot of questions are answered. So we have begun actually trimming some of the stocks that have done well. And our, our equity allocation over the last week and a half has started going back down. So for us to go higher, we would probably want to see prices go lower or clarity, more clarity come. If, if, if next week someone came out with an announcement that was credible, that said that testing is now, that the, the, you know, some form of testing is now absolutely widely available and employers could test their employees before coming back in, that would give us a certainty that maybe this economy is going to be able to have a direct path to get, get back relatively quickly. And we, we, we would become more optimistic and that would allow us to perhaps raise the equity allocation. But it's, it's very difficult to predict exactly the path that's going to happen.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. Any, anybody else have any questions for David on that issue? No?
I also, I also want to make sure that the other part of the recommendation, and it was a part of either option one or option two, was to allow us to use mutual funds in your account. And this is, this, right at this time is as important as ever before. We just launched a new fund that we're using in all of our accounts that allow us to, that is a credit fund that allows us to buy corporate bonds and asset-backed securities and other, and other bond investments that have some credit risk behind them. The reason we want to do that now is because credit spreads have widened quite a bit from treasuries. Treasury, you've all heard that interest rates have fallen. That affects treasuries and government securities directly. It has not affected corporate and other credit-related bonds as much as, as people now are asking for higher reward in order to invest in riskier credits. The profit, we think it's a very good time to move into those kinds of credits, but we can't do it with your portfolio unless we can use a mutual fund to do it in a way where we can buy a fund position that diversifies across, you know, fifty or sixty different credits. So there's no risk of individual credits having problems. And, and another way I can put it is that if you don't allow us that flexibility, then we are required only to, we can only buy treasuries and government bonds. The yield on a treasury bond is less, a ten-year treasury is less than one percent right now. A treasury bond has absolutely no protection against any, any potential inflation that might crop up in the next year or two as we come out of this crisis. And, and, and inflation could be an issue. And third, treasury and government bonds are directly affected by the now extremely stretched budget situation and, and federal deficit. So it, it is unlikely that anyone is going to get anything more than one percent or so out of any investment on the bond portion of the portfolio, which makes it that much more important if we're investing more than fifty percent of the portfolio in bonds to allow us some flexibility. And we would probably be using about fifteen percent of the portfolio right now to put in that credit mutual fund, you know, to get three, two to four percent yields in some of those credit names.
Okay, good. So I, I hope that kind of gives everybody a feeling for what we're going to propose this evening. And that I think it will provide us with more growth and yet give us the security we've been looking for and that we have. But it will, it won't hamstring our investors. They'll be, Manning and the Pier will be able to give us their best advice and move forward, I think, with this extra latitude. So if there aren't any more questions, then I'd like to make a motion. Wait, my, my light is, has disappeared here. Make a motion that we make these changes to our existing account. One is to increase our equity limit to sixty percent. And the second is to authorize investment that include the new credit series that they have begun using.
Ms. Ryan's made a motion. Am I correct that you're making this? Following changes of increasing the equity to sixty percent and authorize investments that include the new credit series. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Brinkley has seconded. Is there any discussion?
I was just wondering, Randy, if you'd be willing to provide your feedback on that motion?
Yeah, I, Nancy and I have spoken at length on this for the last couple of months. She's come on council and so yes, I'm absolutely in favor going to sixty percent. My concern is only the timing of when you do it. And I heard the right thing from David that it wouldn't happen until prices drop again. I'm fearful we're going to have a drop again and I wouldn't want to buy stock now and go to sixty percent. And David gave the answer I was looking for, which was he'll wait to see when the prices drop again. He wouldn't do it right away. And as far as the, the credit series, I think it's, I think it's okay. The treasury bonds are not going to move in the next year or two. It's going to be a long haul back with, with the deficit and with all the funding that they've given out already. And that they're trying to stimulate the economy. So I, I think it's probably worth a try to do some of this.
Thanks.
Any further discussion?
I think that David did a nice job too. He came in and met with myself and Randy last year and gave me a solid education on all of this. So I think it's a good idea to do this now.
Any additional comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. It's past seven to zero.
David, I'll talk to you offline in a phone call about making sure we have the correct paperwork signed. Okay?
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
And Dave, thank you so much. And you're welcome to continue with us to the bitter end or anytime you feel that you've had enough, feel free to disappear.
I think I'm going to step out. Thank you very much though. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. You know, can you just hang on while I turn a light on? I had beaming sunlight till right now.
We can pause.
Okay, there. Sorry. Okay, thanks. Our last step is to consider a resolution concerning the tax payment dates. As many of you probably know, the county has extended their due dates. And with the economy being where it is right now and so many people's income flow disrupted and for an unknown period of time, we thought it would be the right move to also give an extension to our residents for the due dates for the real estate taxes. They're normally due at discount by April thirtieth. And that's the end of a two percent discount period. And then the taxes in full are due by May thirty-first. The proposal that we are making is that the discount period, well, wait, I'm sorry, did I say that right? Yeah, from April thirtieth, that the discount period would be extended for two months until June thirtieth. To give people more time to pay at that discount. And then the taxes themselves will be finally due by October thirty-first rather than May thirty-first. It's kind of a long period of time to extend it, but it would mean the revenues would come in within this tax year. And in all likelihood, quite a bit of the revenue will come in as it normally has because it's coming in, you know, through mortgage companies. But this would give people some relief. So that's what we're proposing. It delays our revenue, but it. it could give that comfort to the residents to delay the payment. And I think we've looked at it and are feeling confident that there's going to be enough revenue to keep us whole. So we, as we've already discussed, and as Randy went through in his explanations, you know, we don't know what the earned income tax amounts are going to be, how that's going to change. And the real estate revenues, I think, are approximately 43% of our overall. So these will come in then probably a majority of it within the first six months. So that's a proposal we're, we're making. I guess if I could before, and you have the resolution in front of you also. And Kate, would you mind just giving a real quick sort of legal statement again on this? You kind of touched it at the beginning.
Yeah. Happy to. So just to kind of reiterate the deadlines that are set for when those discount periods and that before penalty kicks in, those are set by statute. And so that's why they needed legislation to change that based on the time when the tax bill is mailed. So our tax bill has already gone out. So this allows for that extended period. The draft resolution that's in front of you includes both extensions. Legally, you wouldn't have to do both. You could do one or the other. Just, you know, there, there's some option if, if you feel, if you feel more comfortable playing with that a little bit or playing with that with the timelines on those. Move those as well.
Okay. And then this way, we also are not interfering with the school deadlines. And I'm not exactly sure. I think those are July and July and August. So we, we would be, our, our payment due date would be prior to there. So we're not overlapping those two tax payments.
And just, just to let you know, the regulations specifically addressed county and municipal taxes only did not include that same authority for school districts. So I do not anticipate school districts creating a similar extension to their deadlines.
Interesting.
Let me, let me just point out, just so give people comfort. Last year, we got 18% of the taxes in April by the 2% date of April 30th. We got 65% by the due date, which was May 31st. And, and then for the next couple of months, we got 9% the following month in June. That's one of the reasons you don't want to go all the way to December because you want to get all the revenue in this year. So basically by the due date, we had 92% of our real estate taxes for the current year in, in paid by the end of the, a one month after the due date last year. So I'm pretty confident we'll have the same success, maybe a little less, maybe a little more delinquent for the following year, but I don't think it'll be that significant. So I just wanted to point that out to everybody.
Thanks.
We will get the, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to say that's pretty, that's a pretty good statistic. I mean, it's really actually nice to see that.
I've already talked to Rich Lear about this in depth. He will help us with communicating to the residents who've received their tax bill already. We'll do a press release for the local newspaper as well as the other media outlets. We use social media outlets to at least let people who may get their payments direct, their tax bill directly at home, that they don't have to pay it right away.
What's the procedure with pursuing a resolution?
Kate?
Oh, sorry. That would just, it would just be someone to make a motion for that resolution. It was in your packet in a second. Just standard for that.
Do you want me to do that, Patty? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the council adjusts the deadlines per payment of 2020 borough real estate taxes to following. The discount rate shall apply to real estate taxes paid in full by June 30th, 2020. And two, there shall be no penalty or late fee for taxes paid in full by October 31st, 2020.
Okay. I'm not sure I got that all.
It's written in the, in the draft resolution then.
I didn't print that out.
Oh, okay.
So could I ask you to read it again, please?
Okay. It's a motion to extend deadlines for payment of 2020 borough real estate taxes as follows. One, the discount rate shall apply to real estate taxes paid in full by June 30th, 2020. And two, there shall be no penalty or late fee for taxes paid in full by October 31st, 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Brinkley has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will have the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You guys have it. Seven to zero. The motion passed.
And I have one last thing just to mention. Carrie had brought up, you know, the concerns about following the bills and the taxes and I mean, our revenues and our bills as we go forward, since we do have a lot of uncertainty about what's going to be happening in this next six month period. And just as a comfort to everybody, these discussions have started and that by the time we have our next meeting, we will have our March or April monthly report. And that will give you some feeling because by then we'll start to see the earned income tax bills being changed as people's employment has been cut back. And that would be an ongoing discussion and Scott's going to be keeping track of all of this. And Renee has been already preparing a lot of reports as, as Randy was reviewing with you. A number of reports extending the what ifs kind of into our future plans. So this will be an ongoing discussion with everybody and in work sessions as we move along. So that's all I had.
I have a question for Randy, if I could. You made reference to the fact that if we tapped into or needed to tap into the reserve fund, was it correct that we could only do that once? Or was it your sense that that could be something we could do a couple of times if we needed to?
No, no, no. I'm sorry. I was referring to the CD that we have for the capital parks. That's where our money is to, you know, reserve money for future projects that we've put aside. If we put that into and renew the CD, we can take it out of that CD once. The rest of the capital parks or the rest of the reserve, our working capital reserve we start the year with is in a, is in a money market. So there's no, there's no limit if we had to do that, David.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've unmuted myself. I'm going to come back with, there's nothing to report on community development plan, commission or conference of plan work. Hopefully we'll have something for you in May. Public safety, Mr. Mayor?
I had to find my mute button. Month of March, the Oakmont Police Department responded to 243 calls for service, which resulted in unrest, additionally issued seven traffic citations, 34 written warnings and 217 borough tags. Just a note for next month, when we're going over Aprils and May, there's going to be a significant drop off of borough tags. The sweeper out, it'll be the whole month of May. So there won't be very many borough tags likely. If and when these restrictions lifted, I will speak with the chief and we will consider starting back up enforcement on the sweeper route. Once people leave their houses and going to work, there's no reason that vehicles can't be moved to accommodate the sweeper. If you go down one section under department collections, the chief wanted me to note, it doesn't have the amount the police department collected only because there were lingering tags and it wasn't totaled until after this report came out. So that number is clean and available. I'm afraid by and lastly, again, referencing Governor Wolf's intent on May 8th to slowly open up the economy again. At that point, we will revisit and discuss which parks we think will be safe to open. The exception will probably be Riverside Park. We still have concerns about that for certain reasons. But we have a couple of weeks and we'll play it by ear, but that is our intent is if things change on a state level, we will react and adapt as well. And that's all I have. Additionally, our police vehicle is delayed because the manufacturer, the cage for the vehicle, we're not sure they're working right now. So the saga continues for the vehicle we were supposed to have last year. We still don't have it. And I will stay off mute if anybody has any questions. Otherwise I turn it back to you, President Friday.
Mr. Ford, do you want to speak to the emergency management coordinator's report?
Yes, Bill submitted his report to you in writing due to the stay at home mandate. He wasn't comfortable doing it online. Meeting format with his computer and not working. The report you have is in front of you. The only thing different, he wanted to give me an update is that the numbers have changed obviously with the number of positive cases and deceased. And that the, the existing paycheck protection program has run out of funding. He just wanted to update that for you. Currently he is working for me and trying to allocate, to identify and find additional protective equipment for the police department and fire and staff, including masks, gloves and other things. He is working diligently trying to locate those items either through the county or some other vendor we can utilize to make the purchase for our staff to have. And that's all he had in addition to the report that's in front of you.
Engineers report?
Okay, I only have two quick items for council. The first is discussion of Armstrong Way. Senate was asked to investigate some stormwater discharge into a residence home. The runoff is coming from the borough owned road. So we have prepared a cost estimate on how to correct that. We proposed to regrade the road and to divert the runoff into a swale and connect to an existing inlet on Fourth Street. So we're, I'm in the process of getting that estimate to Scott. And then we discussed, Scott and I discussed perhaps adding it to the paving program once that begins. The second item I have for council is regarding the sinkhole on Eighth and Delaware. We, we issued requests for quotation for repair of that sinkhole. And we mailed it to four contractors. We got two responses. The first was from Foligno and the second was from Protocol. Protocol was the low bidder. They came in around $17,500, I believe, to repair that sinkhole. And Foligno came in at around 26. The engineer's estimate that we prepared, that we had submitted to Scott, our estimate was 19,000 roughly. So Protocol came in slightly under our estimate. If council wanted to act on that, I can go ahead and begin construction, have Protocol begin construction. Because it has been deemed an emergency repair.
Where, where, where's the money for that? Is that, do we have that in stormwater or street repair? Scott? Oh, I can't hear you.
I hit my mute button accidentally. I don't know, Carrie. I was actually talking to Amber at length today about if these projects could be done in some way, shape or form with the streets department. If the scope was within their, their ability to do with the equipment, if we rented a road grader and see if it could work that way or the backfilling, I just, I don't know. We've got this project. You know, there's a couple of other stormwater projects we just discovered that we haven't even touched yet. That's a stormwater on, is off of California, I believe, with the cross streets, one of them up there. And I just, I'd like to see if we can have streets crew do one of these two projects first and then go forward and see where the money would come from for the rest.
Well, the one, the runoff on Armstrong Way, that's the one we got the complaint about was that like last week. Do we, do we know around how much you think, do you think that's going to be a high number? Like some of these numbers come in and they're like the, the one project is on, it's like 65,000. Our numbers are all over the place. So Amber, can you give us kind of a rough estimate of that?
Yeah, I think that will be around 10,000.
Okay.
I have to look the numbers over, Carrie. I really do. And I'd like to give them something because I, I always joke, because we've never had a project that was within a scope of what we can do, but using a street grader, putting in a stick of pipe in an inlet is not something that's outside their purview.
So maybe we can, you and I can talk in the next day or so, because I want to pull all the numbers. I have a file on streets and things like that and see what we're looking at in terms of, from a budget perspective before we move forward on this.
We have to. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Thanks, Amber.
Sure. I have nothing else unless anybody has any questions for me. Okay.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation?
We've talked that immensely. The only thing I would do and mention is most of our pavilion rentals started in June and they're all focused on graduation parties. We'll see how that goes. I have no qualms about giving refunds back if people do ultimately cancel. Maybe they will still do graduation parties. If things are different after June, based on the mandates from the governor being lessened and lightened, we'll go from there with that.
Okay. We're at this section now for council remarks. I'd like to share with council that I'm having a problem with my council, borough council email. So until further notice, please use my Comcast account. And the other thing is because the stay at home restrictions will elapse before our next meeting, I think we need to get, give Scott our input as far as what planning needs to happen as things evolve because it may have budget implications. The stay at home order is continued, was to be continued through April 30th. I believe now it's extended through May the 8th. Our governor is using fact-based and data-driven decisions and considering for plans for how we will begin to lift restrictions. The safety first protocols need to be developed, adopted, instituted and practiced for our office. The physical space that we have needs to be secured, CDC compliant. We need to have a healthy building with sanitation protocols. Masks, gloves and hand sanitizer, as Scott was mentioning, that William Albert was secure for us. And we need to figure out whether we have to have a policy in place for personal protective equipment. And does the staff need to be trained? We should continue to emphasize that the citizens can interact with the borough without, excuse me, without physically visiting the office. And if otherwise, make an appointment and use safety protocols. What, what we need to do is to find out what we can do in these days that are left to be as prepared as possible. And what I'd like to propose is that we give the borough manager the go-ahead to put in place the safety measures and to support the funding necessary to implement these measures. There are things over which we have control and those things that we don't. And we need to evaluate while we can and take action before the mandates are lifted. And the best way to influence the future is to make a plan. So I would like to propose that we extend to the borough manager the support for him developing a plan and financing the plan and implementing what needs to happen in the administrative area so that we have a safe workplace and people aren't scared to come to work. so that we have a safe workplace and people aren't scared to come to work. That concludes my comments.
I just want to add, thank you for that. Initially, we have placed an order for a thermo thermal temperature gauge for foreheads for employees so they can monitor, we can monitor temperature when they come back to work. I do have a quote from Service Master for doing a CDC approved cleaning of the administrative offices. I'm scheduling an appointment with him to come in and give us an actual, he gave me a quote based on general force base. I want to actually take a look at things. There's a different couple of options we can do in place to make sure that we're CDC approved for COVID nineteen. Service Master currently has been doing the police department a great service of of cleaning the cars on, I believe, a weekly basis, Mr. Mayor. Essentially because the cruisers are the offices of the police officers. And they're doing fumigations of the police cruisers to keep them safe during this time. As I said before, Bill Albright is looking for masks for us. We are going to limit as much occupancy of the building as possible from the residences. If we can meet outside or meet elsewhere, meet over this this mechanism, we'll try to do that as well until we have more confidence from this Commonwealth that things are a little more under control than they currently are. That's all I have.
Leah? Do you have any comments?
No, I'm all set. I think I've I've said everything I needed to.
Carrie?
I just have a couple of things that I wanted to follow up on. And I also, I wanted to just put this out there is that I'm I see a lot of back and forth with communication on some of these social media sites and things like that. And I would just want to commend Scott on and his continued efforts to send out text alerts. I do not like when I see things on social media like the borough is not communicating correctly. I think we're doing a great job of it despite the fact we don't have a newspaper, things like that. So I wanted to just put that out there and say, you know, if you see things that are on websites or social media sites that aren't being answered correctly, I would I would direct people. I would ask council to please direct people to the borough. Mayor Whaley did a really nice job of, you know, answering a question the other day too. And I commended him as well because a lot of people are just, you know, I think they're all over the place right now. I think they need direction and unfortunately, we're not out seeing each other. So that was one thing I wanted to talk about. The other thing is I wanted to follow up with Scott about the trees at the railroad. Did we figure that out yet? You're on mute again.
Sorry. He has not replied to my email yet.
Who's he?
Adam.
About moving the trees?
About moving the trees, yes.
Okay.
An interesting point is there were a row of flowering crab apple trees all along the top of that railroad wall that were like the cherry blossoms in Washington DC. We had the apple blossoms in Oakmont for, I bet, fifty, sixty years. I really want to be part of any discussion with Adam, if that's possible, because I don't understand why they are taking a position that is not supportive of putting the trees at a distance that would not interfere with a sightline for the engineer, especially when you see the trees that are planted on the other side of the tracks along the edge water development. So I'm I'm hoping that that issue can be resolved without removing the trees.
I think that those trees are the ones that he would, he thought were going to grow. I think anything that will be planted there can only come to a certain site. But again, Patty, I don't, I don't know particularly what was happening before that.
Well, I would. I worked with Adam in the past and I found him to be cooperative and open. And I am curious to see what has changed so that I can accept sort of a reversal from the stand that they've taken in the past.
Okay, well, we'll, I guess we'll follow up with him and see where that stands. The next question I wanted to ask is regarding the Veterans Memorial that we had money in the budget for. I wanted to see if we can get some estimates on that. We have, I think, five thousand dollars in the budget. I couldn't find it today when I was looking for it. Scott, did you find it?
They are going and I are going back and forth. We're going to double check with Randy. We thought, to be perfectly frank, when it was proposed on a sidebar conversation during a budget meeting, it was five thousand. The best we could do was twenty-five hundred. But I honestly believe it was, we could find twenty-five hundred dollars if somebody from the community could raise twenty-five hundred dollars towards the project.
Well, I think that's just repairs. So I think it, I don't know how we would get a cost estimate. I can give you Mike Maggio's phone number. He would probably be best to coordinate it. I think we could also, like I said, get some donations from it. I'd be happy to help solicit them if I have to.
I think Ristelli's Monument, the business in town.
Okay.
Ring Avenue. I think Ed Ristelli, I think, be in the best position to probably take a look at it.
Great.
And evaluate and give us a report.
Okay.
That's Ristelli Monument, correct?
Yes.
That's why I have the my my task list, yes.
Okay, so you can follow up with that then, Scott. I'm I'm just, park software, did we go through with that? Did, because I know we discussed it a month or so ago, maybe more.
I asked, I believe I sent a very generic email to Ryan saying, we can probably start doing this, but then everything blew up. But we can revisit that anytime and getting it online.
Okay. And yard yard waste bins, are they in place for down at the down at the borough building or wherever?
The yard roll off bin is here. It's a third full. So people did use it over the weekend. And I will, you know, to remind everyone, yard waste will be collected this week as well as regular recycling. Yard waste will also be collected the week following. So now we're back on the routine schedule of recycling one week, yard waste the next week, yes.
But we don't, we still don't have cardboard.
Cardboard is not part of this project. No, cardboard is still cardboard. You can still break it up and recycle it into your, as long as it fits in your bin, you will be fine.
Okay, but they're not picking it up along the street yet.
If anything's loose, no, no entity is. I'm I'm trying to find municipalities in here that actually have cardboard collections for that. And there are some if you look online. But no, there's not anything loose around the garbage recycling bin will not be picked up.
Okay, and the last thing I have is I wanted to bring something up in executive session. That's it.
Ms. Ride?
Just thank you to everybody for doing all you're doing through this process when everything is much more difficult than usual. I think the borough is really moving along very well. Both, you know, the police, the roads, everybody seems to be doing a great job. And Scott, you get to get an award as captain of the ship. So thanks very much.
Mrs. Fakaris?
Thank you.
Not at this time, but I too am not using the borough email. I can't get, I can't log on and get that taken care of on the Outlook. So I don't use the borough email.
I'll, I will talk to IT, visitor networks and see if they can reach out to you directly individually. You're having problems logging in.
See what I'm doing wrong.
I think, I think, Dave, did we do that with you?
Yes. It was very helpful.
I may have to just contact you directly if that's okay. Individuals, just to make sure. Okay.
Me, me too. Mine doesn't work either.
It'll be, that's perfectly fine. I'll tell them to reach out to all of you. Okay.
Mrs. Osterhout?
I did. I do just have two quick things. I just want to double check. The Oakmont Boulevard project had reached out to me to ask about their meeting on Tuesday. But Scott, you had mentioned that you're going to start talking to the different groups about like a Zoom function. So we'll be reaching out to them or should I just tell them to try Zoom?
You said, this is, you said Boulevard?
Yeah.
I will reach out to Joanne because this, yeah, my mute's off. Okay. This actually is easier than I thought, especially when it comes to live streaming it, which means it records the record retention because it's a public meeting. I'll reach out to her tomorrow about setting it up for her.
Okay, she also was wondering, and Mr. Mayor, this might be a better question for you. She was wondering if they needed to caution off the benches on the Boulevard on the track there to keep people from congregating. I don't, it's probably over.
I mean, I can't, I imagine people are smart enough not to sit next to a complete stranger on the bench. But I don't think it's necessary at this point. I don't.
Thank you. I'll, I'll let her, I'll relate that back. And then I just wanted to say on a personal note, I'm always grateful for the police department. And it's one of the reasons I moved here because I just love the walkability and I felt safe. And my family recently, in the last two weeks, had an emergency call. And I want to send my, I want to send thanks based from me and my family. The officers were amazing and very professional. They were Johnny on the spot. They were kind. And I also want to thank the EMTs. I just was so impressed with them. And I also wanted to tell Chief Ford, but please relay that. I don't know which officers it was, but my family is very grateful. That's all.
Mr. Brinkley?
Nothing to offer.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll second.
You proposed it.
Okay, I'll propose it.
Okay.
That you're proposing it.
Second.
Proposal by Carrie, second by Leah. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is passed. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. We will go to executive session.
Stay there. Make sure I don't screw this up and lose all of you when I end the meeting online. Okay.
I'll head out. Thank you, guys.